Right. It's a bounce, see the ball bouncing? What a fine, huh? That was your youth, too, that was your youth.
Yeah.
Rebounds, rebounds.
Yeah.
I talked to him, I think I told you, I talked to him about what you and I talked about, how the lobbyists, like you and I had the conversation here about the lobbyists.
Go for climb the pole.
Raj and I had the same conversation, he said that he'd gotten calls from a bunch of lobbyists.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but I said to Raj was, why, you know, isn't that a way to just make your legislation if you're very least, like if the lobbyists just still want to have their fancy corporate helicopters flying, then why don't you just for now agree with that so you can get them on board, so we can just get something done, right, anything done?
No, it's huge.
Oh, Joe.
If not, I may have to come out of the tri-caster and set it up.
I, again, it's, it's, right, it's not, right, I mean, the lobbyists are like, we want our corporate executives to be able to have, you know, an air travel.
Are we good to go, Raj?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for your patience, Annie, and if you could start over all three sentences.
Great, uh, good evening, everyone, I am Annie McAdams, I am the Public Art Administrator for Hoboken Cultural Affairs, and tonight I'm here to present a proposal for a mural at the Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park fence at or wall. So, the public art is possible from the Public Art Executive Orders, Executive Order Number Two, June 25th, 2018, declares that a bond, um, bond ordinances shall be drafted to include a provision dedicating maximum of one percent for funding art installations, excuse me, and then Executive Order Number Four, May 10th, 2019, establishes a City of Hoboken Art Committee Advisory Board. The Art Committee is a group of citizens who volunteer to act as an advisory board to the mayor and the city administration relating to all questions involving public art and the City of Hoboken Art Program. The Art Program is created to enhance visual environment for the City of Hoboken residents, to commemorate the city's rich cultural and ethnic diversity, to integrate the work of artists into the development of the city's capital infrastructure improvements, and to promote tourism and economic vitality in the city through the artistic design of public spaces. So here's a little, um, diagram of the process. In the spring of 2025, the Arts Advisory Committee proposed the fence along Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park as a locale for a community mural to the administration. If the proposal is approved, the cost is $75,925. This is our public hearing. If the proposal is adopted, the administration and city council will have final approval of the design before painting commences. The art would be completed over the summer of 2025. The artist is Emily Strauss of Mural Painters, Inc. Emily Strauss first submitted a mural proposal in response to the Art Advisory Committee's Fall 2022 Call for Artists. Her project was one of several that was considered for promotion by the administration and the Arts Advisory Committee. While ultimately different projects were selected for commission in 2024, the committee revisited her proposal in 2025 when a mural at Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park was first suggested. This, these are some examples of the murals she and her company have done. And you can see there's a, a diversity of style. So, the content and execution of the mural will be created in collaboration with students who are participating in the Summer Mural Arts Program offered through Hoboken Cultural Affairs. This program is free for families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. The theme will be a celebration of the culture and community, excuse me, of Hoboken's West Side. The administration and the city council will have final approval of designs before painting commences. And this is the space we're discussing. So you can see it's a long, long, low stretch. It's about 2,025 square feet, it's forty-five five-foot panels that are nine feet high. And here are some examples of research we've done of other community-based murals, um, with, there's a variety of options, and the, the unknown quantity here is it will be developed in collaboration with students, and the students will be learning how a professional mural artist approaches the job. So they'll, they'll be learning about collaboration, editing, revisions, and then the actual application of paint to surface. So, contribution, oopsie, excuse me. The Hoboken Arts Advisory Committee believes that Hoboken's West Side would benefit from public art, and that given the small number of viable mural walls in Hoboken, the fence along the east perimeter of the Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park is an appropriate canvas. And local artist and business owner Emily Strauss and the artists at Mural Painters, Inc. are uniquely qualified to create an original piece of artwork on the wall in collaboration with Hoboken youth. Mural Painters, Inc.'s compositions are composed of bold colors and an array of styles, and the community-inspired design will complement the features of Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park. And Emily has worked previously on large-scale murals, also in Hoboken, she did the mural on Mission 50 Building on the corner of Harrison and Jackson. The H H A C, or H A A C recommends a commission of public art for this location. The park is located on a block that's part of a commuter throughway, and it's not a part of a historic district, nor is it considered a contributing property to any locally designated historic district. And we are not choosing to commission a work of art that depicts a specific historical relevance per se, but this mural will reflect the people who live and work on the west side of Hoboken. Price and value, the budget for the mural requires an allocation from the Hoboken Public Art Bond in the amount of $75,925 for Emily Strauss and Mural Painters, Inc. The cost breakdowns as follows. It's $35 per square foot for 2,2500 square feet of mural. That includes paint, equipment, and custom stencil fabrication. That total amounts to $70,875. Priming the surface of the fence and adding a top coat to preserve the mural is another $4,050, and then design services including revisions is $1,000. Useful life, the mural's useful life is between 10 and 15 years. And finally, Emily Strauss is a local established artist, and Mural Painters, Inc. has national credentials. The quality and reputation of her work is excellent. Let's see, there's, I can go on and on. Seventh and Jackson Resiliency Park fence was installed in 2019 and is considered of no architectural significance, although I will say it is a pretty wall. The 700 block of Jackson Street contains the park, the Damon Murray, the 600 block of Jackson Street contains the park, the Damon Murray Community Gym, and the Jubilee Center. The addition of a vibrant piece of public art should not have an adverse effect on businesses or residences, it should have a positive effect on tourism and the general enjoyment of the area. And Emily Strauss is creating an original piece of artwork for this location. The commission should draw visitors and become a significant landmark in Hoboken. Finally, um, we presented this idea to council members Emily Gerboor and Michael Russo, and we attempted to also include Jim and had a problem with Zoom. At any rate, they, they agreed that it was a good idea and that it would be nice to have art in the third ward, however, at the time that we presented this idea, we didn't have the actual proposal from Emily Strauss, so they were not aware of the price point for this mural. And that is it, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Pardon?
I guess we'll just do that.
We want to ask questions, or do we want to elicit comments from the public first? Any preference? Why don't we go with the public? If anybody wishes to, this is a hearing, to express any thoughts. Liz Cohen, I see you raising your hand.
Hi, my name's Liz Endoy, and I'm a member of the Hoboken Arts Advisory Committee and a long-term resident of Hoboken. I'm speaking today in support of the city's proposal for a community-based mural. Thank you, should I start again?
No.
No. I'm speaking today in support of the city's proposal for a community-based mural at the Seventh and Jackson Street Resiliency Park wall. Our committee has been committed to placing art in all parts of the city since we were created. We were most interested in placing art in the southwest side of our city and the western portion of our city because it is beautiful, but often forgotten, and an overlooked area of Hoboken. So I believe this is a great opportunity for us to showcase this art, and I put quotes around it, art desert, and make it a destination and a respected section of our city that it has always deserved to be. It is time for the southwest and western sections of our city to be seen as an integral part of the entire city. It is especially wonderful because this will be a communal project created by a local artist while working with Hoboken children. One of the greatest things about art is that it is open and doable for everyone, and it is available to do together. And that always makes for opportunities to share ideas, feelings, and experiences, which further fosters self-awareness, self-confidence, understanding, and compassionate behavior in all who participate. Art also enhances problem-solving and learning abilities. In fact, several statistics show that arts education enhances academic achievement. For example, students with more arts exposure have a 3.6% lower rate of disciplinary infractions. Furthermore, students with high arts participation have a dropout rate five times lower than their peers. In addition, students with more arts learning show improvements in writing test scores and are more likely to graduate college. In short, I believe that this mural, when completed, will have given, number one, a one-of-a-kind, unique learning opportunity to our kids, number two, a long-lasting piece of visual beauty for the art makers to be proud of, number three, something the community as a whole, um, will have to appreciate and reflect upon, and number four, a spot in a little recognized and underappreciated, exciting Hoboken neighborhood which will bring visitors to our city to admire. While some may think art is a frivolous thing to spend money on, I believe it is the gift that keeps giving in surprising and often unexpected ways. I strongly encourage this council to vote yea in favor of this meaningful project. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Rivera Soler.
Just on the mural.
Just on this mural, Patricia, Mr. Rivera Soler. Joe, do you have it? Okay. We don't, it's not working, so.
Grab it.
You can grab it.
Grab it.
There's no remote.
Thank you, Council President, just a few. I would say, things for clarity, I just would like to know if members of the public could understand, we do appreciate the arts, we do not, or most of us do not believe that it is money not well-spent, I believe it is money well-spent. I also believe that in the location where the program, or pardon me, the mural would be, does deserve its long overdue attention, it would be great for the community and for the visitors who come to or pass through this part of Hoboken. But just a few classifications if members of the public could understand, when it comes to the lifespan of the mural, when you say 15 years, does that mean that the mural starts fading in 15 years? Would it be worth the $75,000 if it starts fading and then we have to pay another bunch of money to fix it or somehow maintain it after, again, speaking after its lifespan? That is a question if maybe members of the public could understand more when you ask your questions, Council President. Yeah, and I also would be remiss if I, again, don't say it because I couldn't see exactly what really was the concept, and I know that it was mentioned that it was going to reflect the culture of the neighborhood and of Hoboken, but once again, I must always say and reclaim, and just for it to be on the record, we need to think about Hoboken's history and its indigenous population of the Leni, Lenapeed, and as well as, of course, the contributions of the Latino, Black, and all races who made Hoboken what it is. With that, Council President, again, we do appreciate the mural where it's going to be located, but we just have, just that tiny question, the length of its lifespan, the money, again, would it need to be fixed or maintained in some way? But again, congratulations and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this? Motion to close?
Oh, hang on. Chris O'Connor.
Good evening, I'm Chris O'Connor, 314 Sixth Street, and I am a former member of the Arts Advisory Board, I was the chair when it was first formed, and I also, in transparency, want to say that I'm betrothed to Annie McAdams. And I think this is a really great project, I think it will put light on a neglected part of our town, I think the engagement of art with, with education really leverages this, this project, it will draw people into that community, and in terms of the question about the maintenance of the art, this art has to last for at least five years, that's part of the, the executive order, and there, there are funds in the, in the budget that are, that should be dedicated to maintenance of all the art of, of Hoboken, so, you know, there'll be some, some wear and tear on a mural like this, but there are funds to, to sustain it beyond 10 to 15 years, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to close the public portion? Anyone else? All right, motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel, Annie, do you, I, can I ask a question of you?
Yes.
You heard, so the, I, I believe Manny asked that he didn't see the concept, but the concept is to be determined through the process, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
So you didn't miss it, it's, it has not been divined yet.
No, which is part of the reason for sharing the research that we did, so that you can see the types of murals that we thought would be good and appropriate for this project. But no, the mural design will be finalized with the students, but then it will be shared with the community before.
Come back here for a vote, yep. And just one more question, and then I'll let Councilman Cohen. I, when the breakdown of the $75,000, it, it, it dawns on me that, I'm assuming that the artist will be engaged in this process of the, the design.
Yes.
With the students, and so, and I, is that folded into the $75,000?
It is not, the, the teaching is paid for through Cultural Affairs, so this budget is only covering the cost of a professional mural on that much square footage, and the artist has agreed to be paid what all the other teachers who are teaching for the Summer Arts Program are being paid.
Okay.
Which is how much?
Well, which, Councilwoman Fisher wants to know how much that is.
Eighty dollars, eighty dollars a session.
Okay.
So tiny.
And the number of sessions will be dictated by?
There, we have four weeks of Fridays planned, and there are four hours, so it would be eighty times three twenty.
Three hundred and twenty dollars, I think we can afford that. All right, thank you, anyone else? Patricia, we, we closed the public portion.
Oh, this is not the mural?
Yeah.
Yes, this is.
Yes, that's the mural, because you asked the question after, I want to know, she said eighty dollars per student to go for the summer, does that include?
No, no, she did not say that. The teacher will be paid eighty dollars for a session, and there'll be four sessions, so it's $320 will be paid to the, the artist to teach the, the kids. Okay? No, it's okay.
Council President?
Yep.
Councilman Cohen? So I just wanted to comment that this is coming out of the Arts Committee, the committee is in full support of this. I think one of the aspects of it, if Emily Strauss is a very talented portrait artist, we saw some of the examples of her work, if you look at the concrete wall on Sinatra Drive behind the Little League Field, you'll see a mural that was painted in 2005, it's a similar concept where it was done by a muralist and students painted it, and it's still there, people have had the length of the life, so it's 20 years on, and it's one of the, you know, that 150 years of history in Hoboken, something that a lot of people have passed, and you've probably seen it and noticed it as part of the scape of the waterfront, and that was created by students who were taught by art teachers who are also members of our community today and, and run art schools for children. So not only, and, and one of the comments of Mr. Rivera Soler made is that it would be good to have faces of people in the community and diverse faces in the community, and that's absolutely what we're thinking about, the fact that this is going to be on the western edge of the city, creating a mural and likely is going to be faces that the community thinks would be good to celebrate on the wall, so not only will it be a beautiful art, but it will reflect the community, and it is an unused space that has unfortunately been a target for graffiti, and this would be something that would make it a special place for the community as opposed to a less-than-special place, and it will enhance a public aspect of our community near the Damon Murray Gym that I think people will really enjoy. Thank you, Council President.
Someone else?
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yep. I love the concept and I love the work by this artist, I have a couple of questions, and Councilman Cohen just touched on one, this is an area that is, does have vandalism, we get comments, how, what, how will it be handled once the mural is done if it's vandalized? How does it get cleaned? Is it done in a way that's protected, that it's easy to clean and easy to replace?
Yes, the, the, the quote includes a cost to coat the mural so that we can wash it if we need to.
Great, and this is more just process, I'm happy with the outcome, but I'm curious what the process was to pick, you know, this artist and this project, was there like an RFP, did you talk widely with other artists or?
There was not a new RFP, so we went back to the original artist who replied to the original call for proposals, and then in addition, I reached out to other local muralists who, who have work nearby because the conditions of this particular project, if we're able to do it, and require someone to be available to teach, so of the people that I reached out to, Emily Strauss came back and was available.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
One, Council President? One quick question, in anything in town, always, do we speak to the neighbors in the area just to let them know that it's being painted, to kind of give them some heads up so it just doesn't appear overnight? And not, not saying, I mean, yeah, I'd love to get input from them, but I mean, just letting them know that it's happening, has there been any engagement with people in the area?
I know there's a process that the HBA uses when they are proposing a mural, and truthfully, I haven't been in charge of a mural of this size, but yes, we can let residents know, and I'm hoping residents will be involved as part of the conversation with the students.
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest, if they don't know, they can't be involved to give feedback, so I just, if there's something we could do with the HOAs or, or, you know, leaflets or something to people there, it'd be great. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We give one, we're going to give everybody.
You can, how about you wait till the public portion? Or I don't want you to have to wait for an hour and a half? That's a no, yeah.
It's going to pass unanimously.
You're free to stick around.
It's going to pass.
All right, so, thank you very much, Annie, we're eager to see the results of, of, of this process, and Mr. Farina, on to second readings.
Okay, the ordinance 752 has been pulled, ordinance 766 is carried to the June 16th meeting, and ordinance 767 has been carried to the June 4th meeting. Now we have a hearing on an ordinance to amend and supplement an ordinance establishing a schedule of classifications and allocations of titles for the herein-mentioned positions in the City of Hoboken.
757, Manuel Rivera Soler, B 757.
Okay, once again, good evening, Council President, council, members of the public. Council President, I want to be brief because I know I may have asked this question before, but can members of the public understand that this ordinance, or is this ordinance replacing the 747 that was taken out? I don't know if it was pulled or carried in two meetings ago. Also, just for clarification purposes, the only thing that you're considering this evening would be the titles and salaries that were outlined in the pack, in the packet ordinance, and no other rank and file would be affected with this ordinance. So the question would be very simple, it's just the persons who are, were outlined in the packet page and their, their salaries, and does it replace or where is B 747? That is all, Council President, and I yield back, record time.
You're asking about 747? You're asking about 747 or 757?
No, we had a ordinance in the second reading. I believe it was B 747 that I asked in the last meeting. That was in regards to this same title, but had something else. I do not want to mention what had something else, but.
Yeah. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
I think we can get an answer for you. Yeah, this, the fire chief was removed. So this still has the PBA police officers. There's a large red, or excuse me, yellow highlighted portion, if you look on the website. And the OEP director is also included in this. So the fire chief was removed from this ordinance, and it's coming, it's come back to us. No other members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr., anyone? Mr. Farina, call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
No?
Uh-uh.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
No.
No. He said no.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
President Doyle?
Aye.
And yeah, Tiffany was a no. I think you checked yes for Tiffany. Okay, so ordinance?
Ordinance, hearing on an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit and to establish a cap bank, NJ SA 48, colon, four dash forty-five point fourteen.
No members of the public have signed up to speak on this ordinance?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
No.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Hoboken City Code 59A, Article 3, outside police personnel employment to amend outside employment rates in accordance with amendments to the city's contract with the PBA.
Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler?
Again, Council President, I'll be brief. I appreciate the opportunity. I just would like to know, for clarification, it's for members of the public to also understand, this ordinance is, is it just for, again, what's being presented here for non-police officials? And these amounts that are being changed, some even doubled? Do they have, or do you have, Council President or the council, understanding how it would affect the upcoming discussions in the budget? Was it factored in already? Again, being that it is outside of the police, so that means civilians, what is the opportunity for members of the public to understand? Is it factored into when the police present their budget? And tonight, you're just voting, you are voting just for the doubling of whatever those rates are or the amount of whatever those rates are? And with that, I yield back.
Thank you. No other members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Manny, this is outside employment, so this is not in the budget. Individuals, it is, it is, it is a tax in the sense of whomever needs to close a road, et cetera, may have, will be paying these rates. They aren't doubled, but they are significantly increased, like roughly fifty dollars. A portion of them comes to the city, and the majority goes to the officers who are off duty and choosing to work extra hours. So it wouldn't impact the city's budget, other than getting some money in, but it would increase the cost for, whether it be developers or homeowners, to hire outdoor, excuse me, outside police officers to assist in construction activities, et cetera.
Council President?
Yes.
It does impact, it's not an immediate, huge impact, day one, but taxpayers pay a lot of it. So any, any city project, any of the water utility projects, any of our big parks, any of the Sinatra Drive closures that require police, those are all funded by taxpayers. So there is a real cost to taxpayers. And there's a real cost to residents. So if you're an individual resident, and let's say you need to do a sewer connection to your house, and you have to shut the road, you know, to do it, you have to pay the road closing permit, but then you are now paying a hundred dollars an hour, or if it's some overtime, it's a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. It's a crazy dollar amount. And it's, as we talked about at the last meeting, it is not, there's no precedent for it outside of Hoboken. It's an unsupported number. It's just a really big number. And we shouldn't have given it up the first time, and now we have to give it up the second time.
Well, I would add that it is also consistent with the increases in the salaries. This is in accordance with it. So we'd be somewhat out of whack with our recently increased salaries if we were to. I'm not here to advocate for it. I do support it, but Mr. Farina, call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour? President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 192, parking for persons with disability.
No members of the public seem to have signed up for this. Patricia Waiters, did you sign up for any particular ordinance? Because I think you, okay, so.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance of the City of Hoboken County of Hudson State, New Jersey, vacating a portion of Jackson Street right away to be combined with Block 14, Lot 1.
No members, I'm sorry, Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler, B 762.
Do you have a public portion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Manny.
Just the general public portion?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council member. Council President, just for clarification purposes of members of, for members of the public to understand, the particular phrase, vacating the portion of the public right away, what exactly that entails? Of course, it does say a little further that you're combining two streets, I'm assuming, or two. Yeah, I would say two streets. I'm not so sure. But anyway, could you possibly, Council President, council, could elaborate further on the terminology of vacating the portion of the public right away? Is that just a technical term that just, you're just combining something? You're not giving anything away? Could you just express that to members of the public? I believe I read it, but I just have the question already jotted down. So I appreciate it, and I yield back.
Okay. There's no other members of the public signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vacate means to abandon or give up. So there are two rights of way. B 762 and B 763 are two different rights of way. They total 869 square feet. They're narrow strips on two sides of the triangle of the building that are down in the Triangle Property, down near Southwest Park. And as part of the redevelopment plan, the developer is providing a $550,000 public benefit, you know, the benefit of that much money. And the city is vacating this 860 square feet. So this is a real property transaction to allow them to use that strip of land on two sides of the building. Mr. Farina, for B 62, five, excuse me, 762?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance of the City of Hoboken County of Hudson State, New Jersey, vacating a portion of Observer Highway right away to be combined with Block 14, Lot 1.
Manuel Rivera Soler, you signed up for this as well? Okay.
Motion to close public portion.
Thank you very much. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 190-11 entitled loading zones, add a loading zone to Adams Street between First Street and Second Street.
Wait a minute. Is that, I, I, I'm sorry, you're correct. No members of the public have signed up to speak?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 190-11 entitled loading zone, add loading zone to Patterson Avenue.
No members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
So that's it for ordinances?
Yes.
We're on to the public portion for the public to, if I could have that list, this would be on agenda items only? Zachary King? Did I get that right, Zachary?
Zachary King, yeah, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, so the issue that I'd like to speak on is about the HHA redevelopment plan. I know that the HHA is in charge of that. I also know that this council has some pretty significant power when it comes to approving or disapproving of the plan, also in making recommendations to the HHA. When we were working on the campaign to save rent control, we knocked a lot of doors in HHA buildings. We spoke with a lot of residents. We've connected with more residents in the intervening time as Hoboken United Tenants, and I've heard a lot of concerns about the redevelopment plan. I'm sure all of you are aware that redevelopment of public housing in the United States often, maybe most of the time, has resulted in significant displacement of residents. And I know that that's a concern of residents in the HHA buildings, that many residents feel that they may be displaced through the redevelopment process. It's happened many times. It could happen here as well. On paper, the plan looks really good. Like, there's a lot of reassurance in terms of just statement saying, like, our intention is not to displace anyone. That was also true of all of the other public housing redevelopment plans where lots and lots of residents were displaced. So given that, I would really like to see more of an institutionalized guarantee against displacement, because, you know, government can't just function on, trust us, you know, we say we're going to do the right thing. So I would really like to see some kind of formalization, whether you have the power to do that or whether you can make that recommendation to the folks in charge of HHA. Specifically, you know, I think it would really help, one, to have a formally empowered resident body that can oversee in a transparent way the process of people being removed from their housing and then moved into newly built units, right? I understand that the project is phased, and it's intended to move people out and then move them into the newly built units. And so the intention is never to have a situation where people are left without any housing, which is how it's happened in other cities in the past. I think that this could be, you could push on this a little bit more. I think that we should have a written guarantee that no resident will be moved out until the residents that have been moved out have been moved back in, if I'm making that clear. So first of all, residents having some kind of power and a lot of transparency over the process. Second, a formalized, institutionalized, written guarantee that no one's going to be moved out until residents have been moved back in so we know nobody's getting displaced. Thank you.
Council President? Thank you. I think there are some misconceptions there. And Councilman Russo and Councilman Ramos have both been very engaged in this, and I will.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in real quick. So I absolutely agree with your concern. However, all along the way, there have been statements, there have been written documents to say that there will be zero displacement for any residents. We're ensuring that all along the way, from the very beginning of the conversation, how we spoke to our residents, we had those public meetings at the Housing Authority. We have spoken at numerous meetings at the Housing Authority. We've spoken here at the council to reiterate that time and time and time again. That is clarified and specifically stated in all of those documents every step of the way. So it's been there. To add, there's redundancy in the process. It's not just the Housing Authority commissioners that are making that decision. There's a nonprofit, the Housing for Hoboken, that is separate and apart from the Housing Authority commissioners as well, that make decisions that then goes to the Housing Authority commissioners. They vote on it. This council also votes on it. So there's now three layers of making sure that those tenants of this redevelopment project will be adhered to every step of the way. So I absolutely appreciate your concern, and I'm absolutely with you to say originally that was a concern, I think, of everyone's. But every step along the way, we're making sure, we're reiterating that to everybody, and we're ensuring that it's going to happen that way, so.
Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, I think when we started the process, like the speaker said, a lot of other Housing Authority agencies around the country did displace their residents. You look at Chicago, you look at Baltimore, you look at Holland Gardens, right at our border. So we were extremely cognizant of that fact. Do everything that we can, do the exact opposite of that. We have zero displacement going, going to happen within this process. All 852 units are going to be rebuilt right within the Housing Authority. And like you said, people are going to be moved into those units permanently, without moving people twice. We wanted to avoid that process altogether. But the first building is going on the vacant parking lot, which is a Housing Authority property. As far as the resident board, they do have a resident advisory board, which we met with multiple times. We had multiple public meetings about the process. If you look at the document, page one, first paragraph, talks about not being, no displacement within this project is our goal, and that's going to maintain our process. And I think anyone up here, I feel comfortable speaking for all of you throughout this process, that that was our number one goal. At this day, it's whatever we met with the Housing Authority, every meeting we had, it was reiterated over and over again that that was the case, we would not have this process whatsoever. So we feel extremely confident and comfortable in trying to upgrade the Housing Authority residents' living conditions, which, if you've been through the building, it's a dire need of upgrading. We're going to make sure that happens, and make sure that no one is displaced without this process. So I appreciate the question, and hopefully you brought our process with us, make sure it doesn't happen as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to live up to my reputation of being a pain in the ass, the only thing, what, Councilman Ramos said it very eloquently, but at one point you said, you know, like, rehabilitating. We're, we're going to build brand-new units, you know, and, and then, so people will only move once. They'll move into a new building, which will then leave vacant buildings, which will be torn down, rebuilt, and then... So the goal is to everyone move once, and no one to be displaced. So, anyway, so that's...
You're coming.
So Manuel Rivera Soler?
Do you want her to go first?
On the consent agenda? Well, I mean, you signed up...
Either one.
He said Pat can go first.
Yes, of course. Patricia, would you like to come up? He's yielding his time.
I'm speaking on... The housing, the doc, well, this young man, I'm just...
CD4 at the very end is the resolution with regard to the Housing Authority.
And CD3 too, it's the same thing, $200,000 from the affordable, anyway, I don't got to redo all of that, y'all know what I'm talking about. I must respectfully disagree. This is like, I'm sorry to get up here and get emotional, but I don't like lies and deception. You know where this came from? I was Carmelo Garcia then, back then. Aid, I was the assembly aide to Carmelo Garcia. He had a dream for a plan called 2020 Vision. Exactly what's written in this legislation is the same thing, and I'm going to bring, show you proof, because I was his aide then. And it's so disingenuine, I go to Jersey City, I was with Brian Stack in Holland Gardens. My, my guard daughter just moved out of Jersey City, Lafayette Village, they did the same thing. And they promising these people, they not going to be displaced. But you know what's scary, what this young man should have asked? Do we got the vote? I'm getting sick of hearing that. People is being appointed to the HHA that shouldn't even be there. And once you get appointed, whoever appoints you, the mayor, the city council, whoever, you under their spell. So you got to do what they say, because you just another vote. It breaks my heart when I stand up here. 27 years of me trying to get on that HHA. But I laugh at y'all, when y'all don't pick me, and y'all telling me, oh, because I don't have the vote. But I walk around with big-ass rats in them people's house. I walk around with rusty water, feces coming out, and you keep promising them an empty dream. This is years. And now tomorrow, I'm going to go in my storage and bring every document and show you the same exact story, the same exact lies. We are tired, especially at a time like this, y'all shouldn't do it. Mayor seat, ding ding ding, council at large, every time. Who do you think you got fooled? It bothers me. Somebody tell the truth, please. Pull up Beth Mason, she didn't care if she didn't have the other eight votes. She called the state in, because her own colleagues wouldn't support her. And it's sad that you got to be a vote. Now, the seat is up in HHA, and this mysteriously, I'm seeing, that's what I was going to speak on anyway, 200 grand coming from the affordable, you getting 200 grand, okay, that you taking from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Put it inside those units. They waiting for y'all to help them, and you going to talk about this new project being built, and all of y'all sitting up there agreeing on it. Lies. I'm not impressed, I'm so disappointed in all of y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
With the difference between our project and their project?
Yes, go ahead.
There's one distinct difference between our pro, our project and Hoboken compared to the Holland Gardens project. Those residents were promised vouchers, and they could move wherever they want. And then, once the project is built, they could move, they have the option of moving back. But that project may be built like 10, 15 years from now. Our project, no one's moving, a, a, a new building is getting built, and then residents moving into that building. And so that's a huge difference. So no one's being displaced, given a voucher to move someplace else to knock a building down, a new building's getting built, residents moving into that building, and then the process will go from there. So that, that's what's saving our project. I'm talking about Holland Gardens vouchers.
Manuel Rivera Soler?
Bring it home, Manny.
Council President, once again, thank you.
You're up, Manny, you're up.
Yes, I know, and I don't know if I could follow the intensity, but I will try. I, I think I'm going to fail.
You yielded to her.
Right, I did, right. But no, it, she did express her opinion, so it's valid. Council President, here, I would like to start off with the consent agenda. I'll try to be brief, because I believe that there's not, there's not... Yeah. I want to start off with this, I want to, I'm sorry about that. I want to, again, like I did the last time, and again, Council President, this is just me wishing or congratulating someone, I need, I do not require council to mention or, I guess, give us any explanation on it. But I would just, again, like to congratulate Mr. Caleb Stratton for being, or being nominated or going to be in the commission for the self-insurance, which isn't a, I guess we're going to be speaking a lot, because I attend the meeting religiously, as well as Ms. Daisy Amado. Again, to them, congratulations. Also, the appointee for the cannabis, again, I might get to know her better, as I do also attend that meeting, which they've been very sparse, to Lauren Maltlin. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Lauren, Council President, I continue with climate action innovation. Yes, these we do need, if you can discuss them. It's CL, CL, CA1, this continued increased amount. CA4 in community development, Council President. CD2, CD3. And CD3, Council President, it's just, if you could elaborate, if members could elaborate, so that members of the public could understand or have a better understanding in regards to the amount that's being posted here, so that members of the public could obviously understand that this is for affordable housing in this, in this section, in CD3 of the resolution. As well as in, here I go again, in clerks, CL2, Council President. CL2, it is very, I would say, emotional sometimes, because as a member of the public that spoke earlier, it is hard for people to, again, as I say every time, to understand the process of why and how people get selected for these types of positions. I don't begrudge the person any, any of her merits for getting this appointment, but I just cannot understand, people keep applying and applying, and then they never hear back. And they are very well-versed in these types of commissions. And so, again, I just want to say, I hope, I hope I'm not losing the crowd. I want to say congratulations to Carmen Vega, well-deserved and well-respected member of her community, a senior who is revered. So it's not the person, it's the system, is what I am criticizing in CL3. So I continue. Public Parks, Recreation, just going to say the number, it's F1, if you could elaborate on that one. And obviously, the only one that's there, Public Safety, PS1. Again, like to congratulate in the grant for us having this grant. Again, grants are very important, so anytime we have one, we should highlight it as a good thing on our agenda. And finalizing with Transportation and Parking. Also, T1, Council President, if you could elaborate a little bit, why is that bid, or was that bid rejected? Just so that members of the public can get a better understanding of the process, and why it's important to have bids and to accept them or reject them, so we can know what was the purpose of the rejection, if, if it was a major thing. And I also want to say, CD4, again, it is important to continuously inform members of the public to understand the reasoning, why this resolution is important. Of course, no one wants displacement, and nobody would, nobody would accept a displacement of those members of the community. Okay, thank you, Council President. And also, why is it going back to the planning board of adjustment? And again, I have no time to yield, I'll give you 20 seconds later. Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Rivera Soler? There are no other members of the public signed up to speak?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, there was a lot there. T1, just, we voted last meeting to initiate the process of designation with regard to the Midtown Garage. So since we're evaluating that for possible redevelopment, the, you know, the bids that we had received on work, which may or may not ever need to be performed, are being rejected because of lapsing of time. So, there were some, I, I think there was a lot of...
CD3 was one, I don't know.
CD3, does somebody want to, it's, you know, this is...
No, I can answer that one.
Yeah.
This is, this is the Hoboken Community Senator property, where the future food pantry is going to be going. This is for the units above the, the future food pantry. So this is our commitment of supporting that project that they need from the, from us, from the state of New Jersey and other grants that they'll be applying for. This is our commitment to their application process of future funding.
So it'll be both the pantry and housing, so it's a win-win. Okay, so, members of the council, with regard to pulling items from the agenda, consent agenda?
T1.
CA4, CD1.
CD1, you said?
CD1, yeah, and CA4.
Yep.
CD1, CA4.
All right, going, going? All right, all else? It's T1, CA4, and CD1 are, are polled, and the rest on consent?
Mr. Cohn?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CA4, alphabetically, thank you. Mr. Lor? Mr. President Zano, CA4?
I have the miscellaneous.
CA4.
Okay, statute of limitations running?
Sorry, nice. So we're, we're going to beautify the, I, who's, I don't know, is it Director Gonzalez, is it still you, or is it? I forgot. I know you got your new role, so it's...
CA4.
CA4, it's on the beautification, I guess, after we finish the portico, I guess?
Indeed.
And I see 27 knockout roses bushes?
Indeed.
So we're going to add some color to the front of City Hall?
Yes. Nice.
Okay. And I do want to say, knockout roses, you have to trim them back to get the roses back every single time. So we're going to know that they are very labor-intensive.
We, they're significantly less labor-intensive than other options, and they have done well in other locations, and therefore, we are proposing them here.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to know, is the colors coming back to the front of City Hall?
That is certainly the goal, as requested by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Council President? Director, just a follow-up, is this going to be a yearly contract to...
Nope.
Maintain that?
No, this is a one-time, this is a one-time contract for the actual planting. Large portion of the work is actually the site work in order to grade it properly, install the new topsoil, install the new plants, and then maintenance will actually be done in-house by our, by our maintenance employees, who maintain the exterior of the building.
Quiet down, please.
Beautiful, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Freena, call the vote?
Mr. Cohn?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
CD1?
Yeah.
Resolution awarding contract to the Oteo Group for general financial advisory services in the amount of $15,000.
This isn't in particular to any project, this is just a general, one of three or one of four, Director Brown?
Oteo Group.
Councilman?
Oh, the...
Oteo Group.
Oteo Group, the 15K for them to provide services. It's just to have them on call, kind of, or are they actually doing a project?
Yeah, we have them on call for general questions, services as needed. There's a clause in there where they could do escrow work, or projects that are funded through escrow, so they can help us on different facets with that we need.
Thank you. Just making sure it's not a project behind this specific, which tends to come up on these agendas, that we don't know what they're, what's behind it unless we ask questions.
No, general financial, general real estate advisory services.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Freena, seeing nothing?
Mr. Cohn?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye. T1?
For me.
Resolution rejecting bids, excuse me, bid proposals received in response to bid number 24-14 for the Midtown Garage Rehabilitation Project. Councilwoman Jabour?
Thank you, Council President. I know, Council President, you covered this a little bit in response to the questions from the members of the public. I just want to express, sorry?
The members of the public.
Members of the public, correct. I just want to express on the record my deep frustration over this project and the lack of action moving forward. As my colleagues likely remember, this first went out to bid, actually, I think initially, last summer. We did not receive any bids, the bid specs had to be revised, it went back out to bid, and then suddenly, as things became clear And then suddenly, as things became clear in terms of the administration's interest in a larger redevelopment project related to Hoboken University Medical Center, this got put on hold. And I'm sure some of my other colleagues have received similar complaints, but people parking in this garage have experienced damage to their cars because of literally melting cement that is damaging their cars and the paint that the city has then had to pay for. We've had to do a number of special cleaning projects associated with it. People who work in the hospital report unsanitary conditions related to some of the bird feces that are on-site there. And an increasing number of parking spaces in that garage are becoming unusable. At a time when we need more garage spaces available to us because we've lost the Garden Street Garage, there's potentially a project coming to Garage B that we've discussed here. And it concerns me that the administration doesn't seem to have good answers when it comes to a larger plan about what we're doing about municipal garage parking. And I don't lay this at the feet of Director Weber. We've had this conversation. He knows of my frustration. But I would like to just put on the record that I think that we are owed some level of strategic thinking about what it is that we're going to do about our municipal garage capacity as we continue to pull back on the availability of spaces like Midtown Garage. I am hopeful that we will do at least some short-term repairs to recover some of the spaces that are in the Midtown Garage so that we can give assurances to the residents who continue to reach out to us with concerns about those conditions, that we can give them answers about what's really going to happen, because I feel like I've promised them a number of times that this project would be moving forward. And now, tonight, we are rejecting the bid that we did have on the table with a contractor who was ready to go and start this work months ago. So, I just want to be clear, I will be in support of rejecting these bid proposals tonight in the name of moving forward, but I would like to see this come back to us with specifics. And I'm looking forward to having that conversation in our Transportation Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
No, I'll comment.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yep. No, I would generally agree with Councilwoman Jabour. I think we did, and is Jesse here or is it? I think when we had our hospital meeting, I think we do have a sense that there's a Plan B with costs that are significantly lower to effectively manage or maintain and do some improvements in this garage to buy another five to seven years while we kind of get through whatever we're going to do with the hospital. Is that fair? It's like $5 million or $7 million or something. It's not the 38 million that this project was going to be.
We're preparing a bid package for repairs to keep the garage in operation.
But I thought we, I don't know if you were in that meeting, but we were, we were in the hospital meeting, looking at Joe, where she threw out a number. She threw out a number, Jesse threw out a number of like $7 million or something to... So, it's a number you have an idea. You have an order of magnitude idea.
It's, it's an order of magnitude.
Right.
It hasn't been precisely specced.
Right.
It needs to go out to bid. That estimate really precedes a lot of the turbulence that's happening right now with commodities and...
Yep.
So, we'll see what the unit costs are when we, when we go to bid.
And I know, I think that you've gotten complaints about, like Councilwoman Jabour was saying, cars that have, you know, pigeons, we have a pigeon issue. We were going to solve...
Bird netting will be the first item undertaken.
Awesome. Awesome. Perfect. Thank you. So, it's underway. My point is it's underway. We have been hearing about it in various bits and bobs. I was actually surprised when we were in the hospital Subcommittee meeting that there was even conversations about a Plan B, which was a much smaller number, but I think we just need to move forward with it as quickly as possible. Thank you. And the only, for you, that's fine.
Okay.
And the only other thing I would say is...
Thank you, Director.
I, it's slightly interesting to me that, given the votes and the push for Garage B and the hospital, that for some reason now, there's a conversation on, oh, my God, what are we going to do with parking when that was at the crux of Garage B? That was at the crux of, you know, the hospital. So, it's great that we finally are having councilpeople that voted yes for both to take 2/3 of our parking out at the same time, actually now worrying about parking. So, I hope that that interest in parking continues. Thank you.
Mr. Farina? Call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Excuse me. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance amending Hoboken City Code, Chapter 190, vehicles and traffic to amend vehicles, reserved parking space.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes, first reading.
Ms. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance amending Chapter 190, Article 2, Section 190-4C of the Hoboken City Code establishing pickup and drop-off zone on Grinch Street.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192, Section 192-4A, the restricted parking space for persons with disabilities. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance amending amendments to 190-11, loading zone designating First and Marshall Street.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance amending permitted taxi fares in Hoboken City Code, Chapter 179, taxi cabs.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance amending Chapter 110-25, storage, refuge, and receptacles.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance amending Chapter 98, firearms of Hoboken City Code to include firearm storage requirements.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance amending Hoboken Housing Authority redevelopment plans.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Resolution CD4, Resolution CD for Hoboken referring the adoption of the amendment to the Hoboken Housing Authority redevelopment plan to the Hoboken Planning Board for review and report pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
So, public portion. I believe Liz Nodoy has left the building.
Hi, Council. Thank you. So, Zachary King, again, I'm a member of Hoboken United Tenants. After we defeated the attack on rent control in Hoboken, we moved on to trying to build community with tenants across the city, make sure people know their rights, and make sure that they know that they need to assert their rights for them to mean anything. So, on that note, this might kind of elucidate why I don't necessarily trust something on paper. And this is why. So, in the process of talking with tenants across the city, it's become apparent to us that there are a whole lot of loopholes and things not being enforced. So, we have rights on paper, but there's a lot of problems with how it's playing out in reality. So, first of all, we have the right to do a legal rent calculation. The vast majority of tenants that I talk to that are in any kind of sticky situation with their landlord don't want to do the legal rent calculation because it requires their landlord to be notified. Now, we know that there's ways around that, like you can file an Oprah request, right? But that doesn't necessarily carry the same weight, and not everyone knows that you can do that. A lot of people don't even know to do the calculation in the first place. But I would really like to see us get rid of this automatic notify the landlord that you did the legal rent calculation. Why shouldn't a tenant be able to know what their legal rent is without their landlord knowing that they looked it up, which could carry consequences? Another one is, I just worked with a tenant who got an illegal rent increase on a rent-controlled unit. They were still forced out of their home. We did everything right. We contacted the city. We spoke with the tenant council. Everything was confirmed. This was an illegal rent increase. But guess what? The landlord has the power to deny new roommates, and this is a student at Stevens who couldn't afford their place, even at the legal rent, without roommates. So, their landlord could just sit quiet and not respond to their emails about the illegal rent increase, and they're not going to be able to pay the rent, because they would have liked to just sit there and keep paying their legal rent, but they can't afford it without the new roommates. Their old roommates were moving out. So, de facto, they got kicked out. They're living in the Heights now, right? So, these things are happening every day. People aren't aware of their rights. We've also heard that a lot of people are getting advice from the city's tenant advocate that later proves to be inaccurate. And we know that the city's tenant advocate also does their day job working for landlords a lot of the time. We would like to see this looked at. We'd like to see a tenant advocate that we know is on the side of tenants. And then, there's, there also appears to be a lot of illegal Airbnbs operating. If I just go on Airbnb and look at the listings, they don't seem to be in compliance with the law. So, there's a lot of shady things happening. Like, this city's done a great job in terms of the laws that we have on paper. We have some really good tenant protections. I really want to see us enforce them so they mean something. And that's why we're out here, right, working with tenants, trying to get people to learn their rights, organize with each other, and assert their rights, because our rights don't mean anything if we don't organize. And then, the last thing I want to say, you know, I know that the issue got moved, but Marine View Plaza has been doing amazing work, doing exactly what I'm talking about. And that's why folks from Hoboken United Tenants are here tonight, because we're inspired by, we're inspired by the work that the residents of Marine View Plaza are doing to defend and assert their rights as tenants, and we call on the whole city to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Manuel Rivera Soler? Could defer?
Just give it back. Yield back your time. I yield. I love when he says it.
I will. I just want to say this. There's good news. I'm sure everybody knows by now, but I just want to mention it here. Of course, we're all very happy that a fellow New Jerseyan has been returned to his family and friends, a fellow New Jerseyan that was held hostage. Thank God. His name is Eden Alexander. Eden, all of New Jersey is happy you're home. You're going to be with your family soon. So, thank you to everyone who helped get him free. Thank you. Thank you. So, with that, Council President, I also just want to say, it is Asian, pardon me, I want to say it correctly, May is, of course, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We want to celebrate with them. We want to wish them a happy month, a joyous celebrations to them all, safe and in peace. And with that, I'm going to end it with Slava, Ukraine, Herolyem Slava. So, we're also praying for the peace that hopefully is coming soon, or at least a ceasefire for all of our, I guess I want to also say the people, but I can't remember how to pronounce the name correctly unless I have it written down for our sister city in the Ukraine. But with that, again, Council President, I will say, God bless you. God bless you all, and God bless Hoboken. And now, I yield back the rest and total amount of my minutes. Thank you, Council President. Have a good week.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Kevin Davis? He's got bananas. I know. I'm a man of my word. I came here, boy, nobody even knows what I'm doing with bananas yet. I came, but I bet you can guess, because I came here months ago, and I was talking about how I Oprah'd an email that the Kimley Horn Consultants sent to the city with a file on it of draft recommendations for the Kimley Horn parking study, although it's known as its official name, Curbside Reimagined. So, I said, if I get that file before they really make their recommendations public, I was going to wear a banana costume and bike up and down Washington Street for an hour on the first 60-degree day of the year, and that didn't happen. And I said, if it doesn't happen, I'm just going to go to the next city council meeting and go bananas. Now, that banana gives me a good taste in my mouth. The banana I just ate gave me a good taste in my mouth. I can't say the same about the recommendations from the Kimley Horn study. They talked, it's not nice to talk with food in your mouth. They talked about dynamic pricing of the curb. So, let me explain what that means in English, because that sounds like Yiddish to me. And I think that idea is Moshugana. So, dynamic pricing, they would, the city would charge for parking as much as they could. So, I was critical of Bike Hoboken for recommending a Bike Hoboken tariff on residential parking permits from $60 to $245 a year. So, more than tripling it. But this tops it, because with dynamic pricing, let's say the city does raise it to an arbitrary number, $245 a year for a residential parking permit. And let's say all the people in Hoboken continue to park, because, hey, we can afford to pay that. Well, if people are still parking, city's going to raise it again. They're going to raise it again. They're going to raise it again, up until they get 70% to 85% occupancy, which, you know, I thought the city was spending over $400,000 on a study to research what to do with parking demand and have new technology, and they did all this verbiage, but it's just a hidden way to extract more money from people's pockets. Now, just to show you how ridiculous this comment, this idea is besides throwing bananas around, just think about how they got the data. It was garbage in, garbage out. Not only did they purposely take out the word parking of the study because they didn't want people to think of curb space as parking, but they made sure that the types of people promoting the study are the ones that agree with their idea. Now, in context, that's like doing a survey on the sexiest man alive and giving only two options, Kevin Davis and Michael Russo. And the only people that can do the survey are people that have dated me. So now that wouldn't be fair. You know, you need something, you know. It's a ridiculous point, but you need, it's not nice to Mike. That's why he has a lot of charisma, but it just shows you what you get when you do a biased survey. Now, if you apply dynamic pricing to other government services, let's say we did it for the playground because people say, oh, people pay so much to park in garages, why not charge a nor to park on the street? Okay, people pay $7 to bring their kids to the playpen in the hive. So why not charge $7 to go to Church Square Park? And then we do surge pricing after school from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So for the slides, it'd be maybe you charge $5 to go down the slide at Church Square Park. You know, you want to make money as a government. You want to dynamically price our playgrounds. So you have $5 to go down the slide. Then you have your surge pricing from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. after school hours. You make it $8 to go down the slide. You put in your Metro card or, sorry, your Apple Pay or your credit card before you can go down the slide. And then as a sensor, whenever people go wee, you want going down the slide, you raise the price up another $2 until no one starts using it. When did the purpose of government become about extracting as much money as possible from people for using their services? Are you going to use dynamic pricing for our public school system that you have to pay extra money to get a good desk? Maybe for not willing to pay extra money for the public school system, maybe you get a teacher with only a high school diploma. You need to pay more for someone with a master's degree. Why not? Everybody else who wasn't going to school is subsidizing it. So just think about how ridiculous it is because we're watching. Let me just pick up my bananas, just saying no dynamic pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Patricia Waiters.
Patricia Waiters, 15 church towers. I like to bring facts, okay, so I won't be misconstrued. When I talked about the, I'm talking about number eight with the housing authority redevelopment, and this is for the fair share housing people too. If we want to start talking about rents and amounts and legal, what's legal and what's not, I got a note Thursday, Thursday before last on my door, and I have not lived in church towers more than seven months, it's telling me that my rent was being increased. The next day with bells on, I went to CDA. Because see, I'm not having it, and I'm awake too. So when you want to talk about amounts, that's another issue, and I wasn't here putting my energy in that. I'm putting my energy about people not being displaced. I'm going to give you names and numbers of my family members and relatives that lived in Holland Gardens almost all their life, and yes, they was displaced, okay? So I don't like when people try to call me a liar because I will bring facts. Now, when I said my guard daughter moved down by 4:40 by the old Jersey City State College, she lived in Lafayette Village, they told them the same thing meeting after meeting after meeting. And what's bothering me and what I'm coming up here saying this for, when Michael said it three times, you got to, the commissioners did vote, this one vote, that one vote again. Like today, we see number eight, Ruben Ramos, and I know you, Mr. Cohen, was going to vote for Carmen because it's in Hoboken, I learned lately, it's about who like who. I don't care if y'all don't like me and don't pick me. I'm gonna stay involved anyway. But I want the people that's watching this, that love Pat Waiters, that stopped me in the street, who should we vote for? Guys, wake up again because I'm going to stay involved. I was told I'm not on the housing authority. This is for members of the public, okay? I'm not on the housing authority. I'm not liked and I don't have the votes. So see, this is how the whole city ran. So if y'all think it's only a pact and me as a resident living here since 1962, it a pact them too. And I feel so bad. And everybody in housing authority, I'm not playing. Listen to me, guys, that want me so bad. Pat, why you can't beat on HHA? Because my own elected officials, city councilmen, that y'all go play on the vulnerable and weak and get their vote and give them bingo, Mr. Cohen, and dinners and cookies and cakes. See, y'all can't do that with Pat Waiters. I tell a politician, what you going to do for me after that? It ain't about material things. It's about a quality of life, a place to park, affordable housing, safe streets. That's what I want from y'all, okay? So when you're not this politician and y'all not giving me a vote and you think you hurting me, you hurting the people that live down there. And then you knock on their door talking about, hey, vote for me. Look at our city. Look what shape we in. All of y'all was council people. That's why we in this shape. And I didn't want to lose focus. I'm sorry. I'm here for my dear good friend. What y'all keep pulling this man's salary off the agenda is wrong. Put yourself in his shoes with mortgage to pay, rent to pay, kids to feed, colleges to pay for. But y'all playing politics again, again. Please stop already. Michael Russo, I talked to you earlier about an incident happened, and I noticed people waited at the last minute and didn't show up. I want to thank you because you did pick up the phone in extreme, when I say emergency, Mr. Doyle, you put two things on here for new business, and you got a star by here saying emergency. Mike, you should have did that now that I see it. We could have did that. This is serious. An incident happened in the school district. I'm going to let your colleague share it with you because I trust him when I called him, and it's serious. It is serious. Serious to not, I don't even want to get emotional because I'm a staff member and I work there. I'm a security guard and I am the first line of defense. So I'm here tonight to tell you, everybody that's watching this, that's in the district, you in good hands with Allstate because Pat Waiters ain't having it. I've been in every district this morning. You could pull a videotape and see me out there with the gloves, ready to rock and roll, protecting all of y'all's safety. Safety is my first line of defense. Leave the politics out. All of our kids in that district, some of our kids, students, that's my family members, that's teachers, eh, all of us is concerned what happened today in Hoboken, guys. I know y'all watch social media. This is serious. And stop intimidating people if they come out and speak up, they're going to be threatened. They got to feel like they're going to lose their job and be retaliated against. Because see, I'm the fall guy. That's why I'm here. I'm speaking for everybody that's tossing a turnip tonight, wondering if we're going to be alive when we get to our job or our school desk tomorrow. So I'm wrapping it up, Council President, and I'm, and thank you too, okay, for putting up with me because I could get real emotional because this is the passion I have for Hoboken. This is the passion, and I've been doing this for years because I love the people. Do what I ask you, Mike, please, and take care of that, okay? Thank you. And Chief, I'm sorry, we're going to keep praying for you that they finally put it on the agenda and pass your salary. You deserve to be the chief.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Gil Ledony. Was that close? Ledony?
Hi, everyone.
Trouble already.
Just wait, this is the beginning. Hi, everyone. My name's Gil Ledany. I'm a member of Two Marine View Plaza, right? So look, I don't want to belabor our point here, but I think everyone knows kind of what's been going on with Marine View. Look, on March 27th, this council, members of this council, plus the administration kind of rallied around in great celebration and celebrated that Marine View agreed to fall under Hoboken rent control, right? And we all clapped and said, great, great, great. Okay, excellent. We stand now today with a looming date of June 30th is my understanding, all of our understanding, of the day that Marine View must officially be under rent control and register all of these units. And I want to say we've met with several members of this council, and you guys have been great, and thank you for giving us your time. Unfortunately, since March 27th, we haven't had any communication from the city. We haven't had any communication from members of the council. We have not been told what's going on. And what we have been seeing or trying to ascertain is what's happening behind closed doors between Corporation Council, specifically Brian Aloya and his team, and Marine View Plaza. We're all in the dark. We've been told by Andrew Sobel's office contradictory facts over and over again. We have been told that a rent surcharge, sorry, an income surcharge would not be included in our base rent calculation. We were then told by Vanessa Falco that it will be involved in our calculations. We were then told by other members of the council that it won't be. We're very confused. We met with Vanessa Falco and the mayor just the other week, and there was still more confusion here. So I stand here with many of the members of our community, representing everyone, including the many members of our, the many underserved members of our community. We need your help. What's going on, guys? I have a letter signed from the mayor and, I'm sorry, actually signed from Brian Aloya and Corporation Council that told us that as of April 12th, 2024, Marine View was under Hoboken rent control. We then spoke with Vanessa Falco just the other week, who said, no, that's not the case. Actually, all the rent increases in 2024 are going to be allowable. We feel as a community that there are clandestine meetings happening between Corporation Council and Marine View that directly undermine our best interest. And as we sit here with no representation, no standing, no real hand, right, in this game, and all of a sudden, June 30th is going to roll around, we're going to get letters that tell us this is what your rent is, and that's going to be it. We're not involved, we're not informed. And guys, we've met with so many of you individually. We thank you for your time, but we're not there yet, right? Paul, I mean, we sat there, I know you're trying to work on this, and I hope everybody understands, we have specific language that Erica drafted, that we're trying to get in front of you guys to actually vote to ensure that we can really future-proof these laws and actually change the rent control law to ensure that we're not going to, we're not going to be put, or other members of our community aren't going to be put in a position where they cannot afford their new rents. We are running out of time. We're just about 30 days away. How are we going to get this done? Right? June 4th, you're voting on the budget. When are we going to be, when are we going to get a chance to actually have this fixed? Because come June 30th, the feeling is that you guys, the administration, they're going to wash their hands of this, move on, and everyone's going to have to adjudicate this individually. And we are trying so, so hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, Tiffany, we sat there and told you from the bottom of my heart, you know, what's going on? What's happening? We named names, people specifically, right? Mike, we did the same thing, right? We talked about exactly what we went through, what you guys went through, and we sat there in your office, right? We talked about specifically what we're trying to do. I don't even want to get into the warehousing. I don't want to get into the retaliation. I don't want to get into the maintenance problems and the health and safety issues. That's for a different conversation. We have 432 units. This is an election year. We all know it is, right? Emily, we sat and we talked about this directly. What's affecting this? We need help. We need direction. We need to know what is happening because we truly feel like our best interests, the tenant's best interests, are not being served by the tenant advocate and are not being served by Corporation Council. And we do not want to be a casualty, honestly, of an election year. In a transitory governmental year in Hoboken, we cannot be collateral damage. Now, I say this as probably one of the newest members of Marine View Plaza, so take it all with a grain of salt. I've been there for five years, and I'm still one of the newest members. That, that being said, I'm here to speak for those who can't speak on their behalf. I'm here to stand here in front of you guys and say, we need to get this done. So I really hope that this is going to spur everybody sitting here to make sure that this gets done and that we can actually make sure that we're future-proofed and that we're ready to go. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. Erica Jacobson.
Good evening. My name is Erica Jacobson, and I've lived in Marine View Plaza for nearly a decade. And from the moment, and from the moment I moved in, I was welcomed into a strong and supportive community, and I'm here tonight because I care very deeply about protecting it. I'm incredibly disappointed in this council. I shared draft language to address the income-based surcharge with several of you six weeks ago, and this issue was initially brought up during the first meeting with the tenant advocate back in December, a meeting that many of you attended. The tenant advocate has changed their position on a number of issues, particularly this one, and there is no consistent advice being provided by their office. So I really think that in the future, their contract should be reevaluated and reviewed. For weeks, we've been calling attention to how this surcharge impacts residents and how it's directly in conflict with the spirit of rent control. We've met with many of you, and you voiced your support for an update to the rent control ordinance to exclude the income surcharge from the base rent, yet it was removed from tonight's agenda. We're now being told that the city's attorneys only recently began investigating where those surcharge payments actually go. And this is not good governance. It's a breakdown of your responsibilities, and it's deteriorated our trust in all of you. I sincerely hope that no one in here intends to use Marine View as leverage during this election season because I'm tired of my home being a political talking point that gets attention every four years and then forgotten. If this isn't resolved before summer, then every single one of you will have failed my community, my neighbors, and my family. We're not asking for miracles. We're asking for improvement, transparency, and basic accountability because we all deserve better.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Ernest Boyd.
Hey, good evening, y'all. I'm just going to echo what my two friends have said. There seems to be, there seems to be an accountability, a real issue with accountability because, like Erica said, she handed in this language a month ago, and nothing has happened. And so I think what we need from you or from someone, and this is not something I know, and I say this out of all respect, but in my industry, in the film industry, if I was going to do some, if I was told, hopefully, that something would happen in four weeks and it did not happen, I would be homeless right now. I would never work again. And so it seems like, I know whoever was supposed to get this language to you by tonight, I'm sure they have a lot of things to do, but it seems that this should have happened. So we're deeply disappointed. We don't know where to focus our anger, and that's what we're having trouble deciding, like trying to figure out. So I think, hopefully, we can figure out from you or from someone else after this where that accountability lies and whom we can speak to to remedy this very soon. I'm going to be brief, and that's going to be it because those two really summed up everything that I think needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. James Fisher.
Yeah, so James Fisher, I live in One Marine View. I've lived in One Marine View my entire life. I appreciate everyone that we've met with so far in trying to get these things passed, but it is still disappointing, and it's very disappointing to get a letter, multiple letters that, from the city administration that every single member of the city council signed on to, essentially saying that Marine View was under rent control on X date in 2024, and then in March of 2025, seemingly through Corporation Council, a settlement is made and the city's position flips and says, nope, now it's just now as of March 2025, you're under Hoboken rent control laws. So any rent increases that were made in the years prior, even the three months of 2025, we can't really help you with that, sorry. And to hear basically crickets from all of the city council members that signed on to those letters, those letters that had one position, now the city's position has essentially flopped, and not to hear anything from any of you on like, has your position changed? Has, are you willing to back us up in that regard in terms of these seemingly illegal rent increases that were the city's position, tenant advocate's position at one point? So that's just very disappointing to hear the radio silence there. Additionally, I do think for anyone on the council who is going to be running for mayor, I think it's going to be very important for whoever becomes mayor in this town to seriously think about who they put forth as Corporation Council, who they want in that position because that position seemingly has a lot of power in gatekeeping, what gets set, what gets put on these agendas, where we stand with things. So I hope that the next mayor of this town really considers that, and I hope it's someone who is highly invested in the community because they seemingly do wield a lot of power. And then finally, as echoed by many people here, not just the Marine View residents, the tenant advocate in this town, I mean, they flip-flop a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, and it's very frustrating to deal with them. Someone who is, who by the very definition of tenant advocate is supposed to be advocating for us, seems to advocate for us and then backtrack on that real quick. So whenever their contract's up, I hope this council, whoever's in charge of that, really considers maybe getting someone else new in there because they don't seem to really have the tenants back and they don't really seem to, sorry to say, but know what they're doing in terms of like taking a stand. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nabibia Donadio.
Donado.
Well, it's D-O-N-A-D-I-O. I'm going with Donadio. I'm sorry. Hello, Nabibia.
Hello, President Councilman Doyle. Hello, members of the council and neighbors. I am here today with reflections and an invitation. First, I want to echo the thoughts, concerns, and hopes of my neighbors who have spoken today that have their eye and their livelihoods, thinking about what is going to happen in Marine View as a building, but also what is happening around housing and stability throughout the city. I would like to briefly share a success story because I think it's really important to imagine the world that we wish to see and remember, the way that we can get things done. When I have shared with you in the past that I and my family went through a really, really difficult eviction case, the third lawyers that we went to was the tenant and landlord advocate. And it was a very special opportunity where, when we went to the city for counsel, they actually helped us to realize that our case was very straightforward, very open and shut, where private counsel told us something very different. And so I want to commend the city and the initiation of that resource because for me, it absolutely changed my life, my family's life, and has allowed for me, right, having stable housing, to now return to community and begin to offer energy and ideas to the town where people who are in education and artists and just in industries that are not like high income, like we, we need affordable housing to be able to contribute in the ways that we're meant to here in the community. So thank you for that resource. And I would also echo that I'd like to know how to be able to have the advocate be able to not just take on one case, because I think at that point, they were taking on a case a year, but how can many citizens be able to utilize that resource? I'm interested in like, what's the funding like? What's the line? And so maybe that's something that we can work on together. And in this line of thinking about housing and community, my invitation tonight is, in the last few months, I've had the opportunity to be part of a national organization called the Inheritance Theater Project that has invited us to different cities around the country to work on bridge building work in siloed communities. This, the project has, at this point, been in Hoboken since September, and they've, we've spoken to over 400 people here in the city, all about their experiences with Hoboken and particularly their experiences with water. What this conversation with different communities has brought about has been, the idea has been to bring those stories to life in the form of a show. And the themes that have surged have been, people are concerned about housing, people are concerned about their water conditions and class. So this show is going to be going up now at the end of May, May 30th, 31st, and June 1st, and we're inviting community to come. The last day is also going to be a block party where we're inviting community to kind of represent their resource and who they are so that they can meet each other. I'm really excited about this project because I think it's one of the ways that life informs art and that we can actually come together to be in creation of what we wish to see. I'd like to. I'd like to thank the members of the city council who have actually helped to bring this project forth. Councilwoman Emily Jabor has been part of bringing that here, and it's really dream work to be able to do that. And we've also seen support, Councilman Prezizano came to one of our dialogues, and we got to update Councilman Russo during the Hoboken Housing Authority meeting, and many of you have expressed that you will share to your communities, right, Councilman Phil Cohen, Ramos, Councilman Ramos, that you'll share with your communities about what's happening. And so, we, someone will email you and has, and I hope that we see many neighbors showing up to our show, and that we continue to, to build together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nabibia. So no other members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I know a number of you are, probably want to speak, if you'll indulge me just for a sec. I, I do want to say that, in defense, you know, the Corporation Council evaluates the law and applies the law, and so what, what has been, and I'm relatively new to this latest chapter, but there are a lot of facts here, and there's research that has to be done, and I don't know that it's, it's accurate to say that the Corporation Council has power and is negotiating things away and flip-flopping. I think it's a question, when you're looking into a 50-plus-year-old agreement, which has a duration, and you have to figure out when it was effective, how long, you know, initially it was in 73, was the date, and so we thought 50 years later was, was 23, and then it was determined 24, so that, it's a complex issue. It's not a question of, of flip-flopping and negotiating behind closed doors with the landlord, it's just figuring out the right answer, so that if, you know, whatever decision that is made, we won't be sued, and you won't be put in jeopardy, and neither will the city. So with that, you know, we're very cognizant, and I don't want to say too much, because others, I think, are more knowledgeable, but we're very aware of the June 30th date. There's two, two meetings in June, the 4th and whatever, 18th, the 16th, which, so there's time to make a change, and we all know the spirit and the intent of the rent control law, and so we're dealing with an unusual piece with the income surcharge, which, income is irrelevant to rent control, so, but anyway, I, I-
Do you want to clarify why those two dates? For them, for the two date changes?
Well, there's-
The first one was the law adoption.
Right.
And the second date is when the actual first payment was made.
The mortgage.
So that's discrepancy that we just discovered recently with the two dates. The law being adopted in one year, and then the first check to the city being made is the following year, when the building was occupied, and then making their first payment.
Right.
That's what we discovered recently, that's why the date was changed.
And the pilot agreement was somehow extended beyond 50 years, so that kind of screws up something, so it's, I mean, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make, I, I do think that the tenant advocate has generally, I, I think the answer was, he was given certain facts, he gave it, made a decision, and then he learned more facts and said, oh, that's maybe my initial read on this is wrong. It wasn't flip-flopping, it's just getting all the answers. But I apologize for taking up too much time. I know that Councilman Prezizano wanted to speak, and, and others?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Oh, actually, well, why don't we, why don't we just talk, talk this through, and then we'll do the new business, rather than, but thank you.
So I think there's one thing to look at here, that this, as we know the complexity of this, it's not easy to say, this happened and we're done, this is the new rules. A lot of the, there is some, that June 30th date is kind of the cliff, and there was a legal agreement between Marineview and the city that things would take place. In that process, the language that you guys were looking for is, of course, we have to vet that from Corporation Council, which we've gone back and forth a few times, I wouldn't say more, I'd say more than a few times. And I had to, I don't know if the right word is argue, I think the word is debate or discuss, whether wording could be very simplistic, or it had to be a little more involved. We have to run this through subcommittee, so that runs into another problem, so this is all timing. So the last time, we didn't have all the pieces of information for the last meeting, and then it pushes to two weeks, and then we had, we tried to get this through subcommittee in a, in a meeting on Friday. On Friday's meeting, there was some information of a rock overturned, to say, can't say it any better way, that had us questioning something, in that, as we look on the budget, the number that we see for, that the city receives for the income surcharge is X. We then found out some other things that are listed, or that was made known to us, is that there may be more money, there may not be more money, or that maybe pieces go to different places. So before we can vote on a law up here, we don't want to expose the city to any more litigation. That'll be the first thing I'll ever say, is, is I want to, I want to mitigate litigation, period. So the subcommittee had a discussion, and felt that it was best that we hold this off to the next meeting till we get those questions answered. And again, it's not for a lack of trying, it's a lack of getting responses sometimes, and I don't want to say that government's slow, however, there was debates that had happened, and there was pieces of information that were, either phone calls were made, they had to wait for them to come back, things of that nature. So now, we're at a point where, yes, it was on the agenda, once we had the subcommittee and found that this other piece of information, we are now researching that to find out where we can be, and hopefully, once we get that information, it'll be on the agenda come in the beginning of June. Very cognizant of, cognizant of, that I've been explaining to everybody, is that we want to get this done before we get to that cliff on the 30th, so that it's written in there. So it's not for a matter of lack of trying, it's just that this is a very complex issue, and unfortunately, it seems every day, we find another piece of information, I think, as, as Council President said, we find a piece of information because of this, it's an old doc, it's an old agreement. But again, we want to dot our i's and cross our t's, because we don't want to come back and have you guys, again, oh, here we go again, we're a political football again. We want to close the door, finish this, and get it done. So is it, in a nutshell, I can't emphasize more that you're, you're not going unnoticed, there is no closed-door meetings, there's emails that go back and forth that you can Oprah, that you can see, that I've had with Corporation Council, that, you know, I've been pushing, and however, there's no excuse, because there has been some people that have left the administration that were a little bit more versed in this, there are other people that need to get up to speed on it, it's a little tough from that standpoint, but from the lawyer's standpoint, the piece that we found out on Friday, it, it held us from putting that on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Are we, I'm not, pardon?
Paul DeJong.
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there a, a general, though, commitment that we're gonna have something on the next agenda, period? Like, the city is solving for it? And if I can maybe take away what you guys said, it sounds like there's three main issues. One is, when does the rent control clock start? What is that date? Whether it's 2024 or now? The second is whether or not the income surcharges are included in base rent for purposes of rent control. And the third, which is more complicated, has to do with whether or not the, or where the income surcharge payments are going, whether 100% of it's going to the city, or a portion of it is going somewhere that's not the city, and those-
Or to the state.
Right, those are three, those are kind of the three categories.
Those are issues that are up in the air.
But we are going to solve all of those within the June 30th timeframe, no matter what, even if-
By next, we're, we're trying to find that out by the next meeting.
Yep.
Right. But, but in, within this timeframe, it will be solved.
That's, that's our rule. And they should, rent control should not represent a significant win to all.
We are cognizant of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. All right, so are we, can we finish our meeting? No.
Motion to-
We essentially suspended our agenda, too, so you don't have to wait another 20 minutes to, you know, but-
Motion to close public portion, right?
Motion to close-
We already did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We didn't.
Yeah, so we're on to new business, and thank you. We can, I think, handle these together, it's a resolution. Councilman Prezizano, do you want to, or?
Okay, I guess, you want, okay. For, for the council here, and for the public, this is to allow work to be done for the next month or so, on the consigliere had, the construction management company, they were asked, because of the closure of Jersey Ave, they were asked, they were doing, gonna do this during the day, but they would have to dig into the road, and you know the nightmare would happen on Observer Highway during the day, so they had asked, can you do this at night? And they were just told earlier this week to kind of do that, they were having some discussions, but on Thursday, they were let, known that they had to do something, and realized that this is starting on the 27th, and our next meeting is on June 5th, so it doesn't really work out. So they were looking to basically work at night, they had to, from my understanding, is connect sewer pipes and actually put a manhole cover in Observer Highway, so again, if we did that during the day, it'd be an absolute nightmare with what we're dealing with already. So that's what this emergency resolution is for.
Thank you, Councilmen. Mr. Farina, call the vote?
You got it.
On both NB1 and NB2.
Got it. Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilman Jabor.
Yes.
Councilman Prezizano.
Aye.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Motion to close?
Second.